All right, good evening, everyone. It is now 5:02 PM and the chair calls this meeting to order. Before we do the pledge of allegiance, just want to make sure and take roll call. Trustee Kane.
Present.
Trustee Mario.
Present.
Trustee vote.
Present.
Trustee Wilson. Trustee Stoma.
This trustee Wilson on here.
Pressu Wilson is here. Trustee Stoma. Trustee Sullivan. I think he's muted, but I see trustee Sullivan and trustee Pierce. I think you're muted, but trustee Pierce is probably there just to make sure for those joining us virtually, please make sure to turn on your cameras. We need to see your lovely faces, please. So do we have trustee Pierce? She will probably join us later. All right, if you can just please stand for the pledge of allegiance. Dr. Head, has a proper meeting notice been posted and certified?
Yes, I certified it was posted in accordance with the law.
Perfect. There is no closed session today. Desiree, do we have anyone for public comment, signed up for public comment?
Madam Chair, we have no public comment tonight.
Okay, thank you, ma'am. Do we have any one special guest recognition?
Yes, we have Jamie Swinerton from the Houston Chronicle. Jamie's out there. Thank you again.
Thank you for joining us today, tonight. Anything for workshop?
No.
No? Okay. So the next item is the approval of the minutes of the February 9th workshop and regular meeting of the Board of Trustees. They have a motion and a second to adopt the minutes.
Motion.
Perfect. It's been moved improperly second. All those in favor, please vote aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The item motion passes. Thank you. Our next item is the special reports and announcements. Chancellor, I think you have an announcement for us, correct?
Yes, I have. I want to show the board exactly where we are and where we stand on enrollments compared to everybody else. I just received a report yesterday. And Desiree, could you pull that up?
Sir, we'll pull it up.
So I wanted to show you where we stand. Can you move that down a little bit so we can see the headers, Desiree? So this is certified enrollments, certified enrollments. This is non-duplicated headcount and keep in mind that we have late start. So some of the numbers you see, but I wanted to share with you where we stand and what the issue is across the state right now. So the total, the average across the state was 11, almost 12% decline from fall of 19, but I we put these in with large colleges. I just wanted to show you where we stand compared to everybody else. And so if you'll take a look at fall of 19, and then look at fall of 21, and you can see the decline in there. Alamo is in San Antonio, so they've dropped eight percent, seven percent. You'd see Austin dropped 15%. Collin County, which is in Plano. It's a little different area and you can see what size they are compared to us. So they didn't drop that much. Dallas, which is one of our peer colleges, we're now larger than Dallas. We are the largest community college in the state by far. And under the circumstances, I don't know whether I'm proud of that or not. We were ahead at one time, then they caught us after Hurricane Harvey, but you can see that Dallas dropped 16% during that time period. And Tarrant, you can see if you go down, Tarrant, which is adjacent to them, dropped 21%. So we lost in Houston Community College, lost 19%. So you can see we'd lost 8%. What's important about all this is let me show you a couple of other things. If you could go down and just take a look at the size of some of these colleges, I think you'll see what the issue is and why we're meeting and just hold on right there just right just for a minute. So if you'll take a look at number 17, for example, and number 18, you get an idea of what some of the issues are. And so when we're trying to figure out how to come up with a finance system. And as I mentioned before, of the 50 community college systems, about seven or eight of us are in good shape. And about seven or eight are okay. Then we've got about 35 of them that are not in good shape and you can see, and when I showed you that gave you that information before about the growth and how the growth is moving into the triangle from Houston to San Antonio up to Austin and up to Dallas and Plano and down, it's basically 10, 35 and down to 45. And when 35 of the colleges are really beginning to feel the pinch of a loss of students and a loss of assessed value, that's the challenge we have. And so our goal is to try to figure out from a state perspective, how to provide everybody the opportunity to have access to higher ed, but you can see some of the issues here. And so when some of the issues have been, they were trying to give an equal amount to everyone. And when you've got 70 something thousand students like, would you just take that that left-hand column when we were a couple of years ago, when we were at 78, it doesn't make a lot of sense when they're giving us the same amount of money that they would somebody with 1,400 students. And so when we're talking about mergers and shared services and things like that, this is the fundamental issue. Just go down just a little bit, if you would. You can see some of the other peer or peer colleges, but you so when we're dealing with this at the state level, it's it's an uneven discussion because the issues, if you're Western Texas and you've got 1,400 students right now compared to Lone Star, it's a different, different issue. So, but I did want to show you that. So I mean, 8% losses still 8%. The challenge that we have, by the way, and what's really important to us is that we start the base year. So our funding will basically be based on what happens from now until next March, and then they'll determine how much money we get based on our percentage of it. That's assuming that the formula doesn't change, which is what we're working on at the state level. I don't think the fundamental formula is going to change though. So and I do think that the state right now is in excellent financial shape. So we'll see. It, my point is, it's it's important that we grow so that we get our share of the money. If we don't grow, then we don't get our share of the money. So if you, the question was, what do the asterisks mean? So it down at the bottom of that, this, we, we took this out of another sheet. What it says is it talks about Dallas. It has Dallas and San Jacinto, the ones with multi-campus systems. It just lists the campuses by enrollment. So any questions about that? Okay, that's it.
Thank you, sir. Board members, do we have any reports or comments? Yes, trustee Kane.
I had the pleasure of attending two events at Kingwood College recently. One was a groundbreaking for what will be a fire training facility. And the other was the ribbon cutting for our health professions facility. Both great events. The Health Professions Facility is incredibly impressive, state of the art, was really, really great to tour that, that building and applaud all the things that are happening on that campus.
It is an extremely really good building and then all the stuff that they have, that they have this machine where in the health building, they have this machine where you could see a person's image of a body and then you get to see the the veins, right, the muscles. So each time someone presses the, the control, it like zooms in to like all the way to each vein in a person's body. So that's how unique this thing is, correct? Did I get it right? So yeah, good, good stuff for, for Kingwood. Any other reports? I understand that trustee Sullivan has a report for his district. Is that still correct, sir?
Trustee Sullivan is having some issues with his audio. We're trying to troubleshoot right now. So if you'll give me just a second.
Okay. Well, while we wait for trustee Sullivan, I just want to make it very kind of sweet announcement here. So today's happy, what is it, International Women's Day? So I just want to say congratulations and it's an honor for all the women here, all the staff. You know, for Lone Star College, the staff, the students, happy International Women's Days to all of you. Thank you so much for everything that you ladies do for us. Thank you.
Trustee Sullivan asked to move on if possible.
Okay, we can always come, can we always come back to the report? Okay. All right. So we can always come back and open up.
The Open Meetings Act requires that board members be both visible and audible in order to be considered present for the meeting and for voting purposes. So if we're moving on to voting items next, next, we may want to make sure that trustee Sullivan's audio is, is working.
You might want to sign off and then sign back.
If you can bear with us for just a second, we're trying to work this remote thing, just one, one moment. And I think I see trustee Stoma joined us. Is that correct? Are you able to hear us, trustee Stoma? Okay, we, we need to make sure that we have all trustees visible who are joining us virtually and are able to hear your, your, your vote before we proceed with the consideration of the consent agenda and all that good stuff. Okay, so I, just to make sure, if you're having issues, those joining us virtually, if you're having issues listening to us or, or just opening up the, the camera, you can always join us by phone. So I believe that we had sent out an email, correct, to everyone?
Yeah, I didn't receive the email, but if I remember the, the previous messages had, had an option to join by phone. So if your audio is working from your device, but your, or your visual is working from your device, but your audio is not, you may be able to stay on your video and then call in by your phone for audio and then we would be able to see and hear you at the same time. Yes, I'll make sure that the trustees have that right now, if they can't find it in their email.
So Desiree, you sent out a note today. Yes.
Okay, so we're, we're just gonna hold for a second until everyone's able to log in and we can hear everyone. So we're gonna skip the consent agenda. So let's get situated, but if we can have the financial reports presentation now, that's okay, Jennifer?
Sometimes. It was on 3:03 at 5:00 PM.
This Mike Stoma, I can finally hear and speak. Hope you can hear me.
Well, it was reported. Well, let me see.
Wilson, if we can have you for just a couple of seconds. Okay, perfect. Jennifer, proceed.
Yes, good evening. So going to the financial report, I have for everyone today, the monthly financials for the month ending January 31st, 2022. So on the revenue side here, so far as of January 31st, we have collected 282 million in actual revenues, which is 70.3% of our total revenue budget. Now, even though that's slightly dollar-wise, slightly more than we had collected at this point in time last year, right? Last year, we had 281 million. We do have a larger revenue budget this year. So as a percentage, we're lower. We are at 70, only 70% of our total budgeted revenues collected so far. So this does indicate that we are behind on reaching the budgeted revenues in this year's budget. Now, that is to be expected because we do know that we had budgeted, budgeted enrollments, credit hours at flat. But rather than flat, we have seen a decline in credit hours, which Dr. Head covered in his report. But so with that, those revenues coming in lower than forecasted is what is reflected by this lower percentage than the same point in time in prior years. Next slide, please. On the expenditure side, as of January 31st, we have spent 139 million in actual expenditures, which is about 35.7% of our expenditure budget. So here too, in terms of dollar terms, we are around the same expenditure level as last year, 139 million. But again, we have a larger budget this year than last year. So on a percentage basis, we have spent 35% of this year's budget. So while revenues are down to the budget, expenditures equally are at a, at a pace slower than the same point in time in the prior year. If we could go to the next slide, please. Now, this is where you will see some of those percentages reflected in our actual forecasted budget. So this is where you see the tuition and fees. We are forecasting about $4 million less in revenues than was budgeted. And so there, that 4 million, again, we had assumed 0% in the budget that was passed this past August. The fall credit hours was down 2.4% and spring credit hours was down 6.2%. Now, these numbers will differ from what Dr. Head just showed in his report because that was based on unduplicated headcount where this is credit hours. And the reason I do credit hours here is that is what drives the tuition and fee revenues, right? Payments are based on number of credit hours, not headcount. So that's where credit hours becomes important in this respect. Next slide, please. Now, as we go with the fall credit hour decline and the spring credit hour decline, each time as we've done in prior years, we immediately operationally make budget reductions to offset that amount. We did so in the fall and we have done so again here in the spring. So that $4 million in forecasted variance of revenues is reflected here on the expenditure side where we have made budget reductions to offset that amount. And this is where we are operationally trying to keep ourselves in alignment on the expenditure side with revenues as we go. Next slide, please. You have been provided the building and grounds report. I do want to mention, we have made some slight progress on FEMA. I will include a report on that in a future month, but it looks like we may be receiving an additional reimbursement there soon. So we're continuing to work that process as well on the COVID stimulus funds. There, I intend on providing a lengthier report at the April board meeting once, because we are right now dispersing the student awards that we do for the spring term. And then finally, I do just want to mention that we have, again, from the Government Treasurers Organization of Texas, they have awarded us the Lone Star College, the Certificate of Distinction for our investment policy. And the certificate is good for two years. This is the second time we've applied and received this certificate. So definitely very happy about that certificate. And thank you to, in particular, the Treasury team who works on that investment policy and the board reviews that investment policy each year. So thank you for your support there. Thank you.
Thank you, Jennifer. Colleagues, any questions or comments? Perfect. Thank you so much, ma'am.
Thank you.
So we want to go back to the consent agenda. Want to make sure that we are all able to vote. So just want to make sure that we see your handsome and beautiful faces and that you are unmuted. So can we have anyone unmuted for just a couple of seconds while we vote? Trustee Pierce, are you still here?
The people waiting for women in 2018. And so one thing, and then I have a cancer, a vivid, people represent the cancer, you know?
We do hear trustee Pierce. And I think trustee Sullivan and Stoma, are you both here?
So Stoma, I'm here. Can you hear me?
Sir, we can hear you.
Thank you.
Trustee Wilson, can you hear us?
Yep.
Perfect. And trustee Sullivan, I think it was the other colleague had issues.
Trustee Sullivan's has logged off the meeting.
Like, okay. So let's go ahead and go and move forward to the consent agenda. Colleagues, do we have any items that you would like to pull separately? So hearing none, may I have a motion and a second to adopt items 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 10, 11, 12, 13, and 14.
So moves.
Second.
Perfect. Thank you. So it's been moved improperly second. So all those in favor, please? One, one moment. So, so it's advised by Melissa, our board attorney, that it's, it's, we're going to do roll call just because we're having some technical issues. So one second. Trustee, so let's start with those joining us in present. Trustee Mario.
Here. Yes.
Uh, yes, perfect. Trustee Kane.
Yes.
Okay, trustee vote.
Yes.
Trustee Wilson.
Yeah.
Trustee Stoma.
I'm here.
Is it a yea or nay for the consent agenda?
Still eyes out, yay.
Yay, okay, perfect. And trustee Pierce?
I'm here, but I'm going to, madam chair, I want to record that I'm abstaining from voting to approve the full consent agenda. And I want the record to reflect that my reasoning is because the documentation that was presented, the action, and some of the action items were not clearly justified to me. Thank you.
We need to go ahead and turn on your video camera, please, for us.
I'm sorry, I can't do that. Just left the dentist and I have a swollen jaw. I don't want by to see me like that.
One second, ma'am. Just one, one moment. We'll have Melissa mention something.
Yeah. And for purposes of the Texas Open Meetings Act, if a board member is participating by video conference in order to be considered present at the meeting for purposes of for voting purposes, you would have to be visible and audible. So if your camera's not working or you can't be on camera, then you wouldn't be considered present or, or be able to cast a vote on, on the item.
Well, I tell you what, Melissa, I, I will get on, but I'm gonna have a face mask on. How's that?
That's fine.
Okay.
Okay, perfect. Trustee Pierce, so go ahead. Is that a nay, a yea or a nay?
It's an abstain.
Abstain, okay.
Extension, okay? And let the record reflect why I did it, please.
Yes, ma'am. Perfectly. And then trustee Sullivan is not joining us. All right, is that, is that all we need? Trustee vote, you got it? Okay, that, is that good, Melissa? Yay for me. We're good. Okay, perfect. Thank you, Melissa. Thank you, everyone, for, for for voting and, and your patience. All right, so next item is so we did the reports, national reports. Ground report, suggested future agenda items. Colleagues, any suggested future agenda items?
Um, this is trustee Iris Wilson. I just have a question. So is trustee Sullivan not doing anything? We're not going to get an update on redistricting. I'm just trying to understand where we are with it and so it can be on record what's going on.
Sure. So he was, he had some difficulties with his, I think, computer or internet. So he's not going to be able to give us a report today.
Spike Stoma, follow-up question on that. Is there someone here on the, attending on the redistricting committee? Art, aren't you on the committee? Ernestine, I think you're on the committee. Who's on the committee? Can, can you at least confirm that we're on schedule? Can somebody confirm that?
So far we are. I have a public forum tomorrow with District 2. And my, yeah, so far we are on schedule.
All right, that, that's my concern.
This is trustee Iris Wilson. I do know that there will be another redistricting meeting with everybody on the 24th. I think that's what they told me today. So to discuss the, what, what, what the outcome was from individual meetings and changes.
Thank you.
All right, perfect. So yes, we are on schedule and then we have a, a meeting tomorrow. Is that correct? Yes. Community forum, perfect.
We have a public forum tomorrow, madam chair, District 2.
That's, that's your community forum, is that correct? Yes, okay, got it. So we just want to make sure then we'll have trustee Sullivan send something in writing to everyone, just a reported writing through, through email.
I just think that's critical, just to make sure we're on schedule because we have no schedule variance, you know, it's, it's pretty tight going in. And if these forums don't go as, as planned and other things get in the way, we need to know as soon as that, that happens.
Good point. Trustee Stoma.
Trustee Stoma, I've been at, this is Steve Head. I've been at all the meetings and everything's going, they start on time, they finish on time. And Thompson and Horton is giving the overview and we've asked for community input and so far, everything is on schedule.
Can you, can you comment on the community participation? How, how's it been?
Yes, so far, we've had no outside citizens show up for the meeting. We've had, I think we've had four or five meetings and we've had one person, the same person sign in on Zoom, but so far, nobody from the community has showed up at the forums that we've had.
Yeah, that's unfortunate, but not surprising, given the world events. So, thank you.
Perfect. Any other comments or future suggested items? So hearing none. It is 5:31 PM and we adjourn this meeting. Thank you so much.
Thank you.